I'd like to call this meeting of the Westland City Council to order, please. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by Councilman Hammond.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Hammond. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Present.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Londo.
Here.
President Gobow.
Present.
Before, Ms. President.
Begin with announcements and presentations. Commissioner?
Thank you. Good evening, council members. I just wanted to find my notes here, but we have been doing some things at the county. Wanted to give you a bit of an update. One of the things is the Eloise Agreement is complete, and we'll likely see construction starting activity probably by the end of the year, I'd say is pretty safe. The contractor is obligated to invest at least $20 million into the property, which is a, will be a nice change down on that end of town. And the county is continuing to consolidate operations and reduce pension liabilities, and a big step in that process is we sold the downriver sewage disposal system to a consortium of 13 downriver communities for $57 million, $57 and a half million. And when this deal closes, the proceeds will be applied to the underfunded pension liability for the county. At the last full commission meeting, we approved a modification to a federal justice assistance grant, a JAG grant for police departments here in Westland that allow the county to process a reimbursement of $24,286 to the city of Westland. And it was just a paperwork snafu, I understand, but anyway, that should be forthcoming. And with that, that's all I have tonight. I know there's a big day tomorrow for a lot of people, so we will be watching that.
Thanks.
Good luck, everyone. Bye-bye.
We'll move on to citizens' questions or input on the agenda. Citizens will be recognized before the business of the meeting commences to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Citizens are asked to limit their questions or input to three minutes. Is there anyone on my right? Ms. McKinney?
On the consent calendar, item H, approval of purchase of 2018 Ford Explorer. Can you explain what that's for or what department? I, introduction of ordinance 259A, if you can explain this one. And J, introduction of an ordinance 149A, if you can explain that one. And K, same thing, another ordinance, if you can explain that one. And that's it.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments on the agenda and move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Or there, I'm sorry, there was some, there was a question on a couple of the items. Item H, Devin?
With response to item H, to explain the item, it is a replacement vehicle for the mayor's office. We originally sought out to get this vehicle approved on a lease basis, but Ford Credit no longer provides leasing options to government agencies, so therefore, we're recommending approval of the, of this vehicle for an outright buy. And we will be replacing a 10-year vehicle upon approval. Thank you.
And then on, Mr. Foson, on I, J, and K?
Certainly, thank you, Council President. Council, tonight, we're putting forward as introductions three ordinances that were talked about by council back in the spring. The first one is on yard sales. The council had given some direction to sort of deal with some of the issues that had arisen on yard sales. In this instance, we have drafted it with some of that direction, so that there could be eight total days of yard sales at a given location. Three yard sales for individual and groups up to those eight days. Subdivisions can have two yard sales. Multi-day, four-day yard sales only can run Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and you can't stack the dates together. Just trying to get some control, as council had asked for, on yard sales throughout the community, and certainly those yard sales that seem to be 24/7/365 businesses. So this introduction allows the council to review this ordinance, get public input over the next few weeks, and two weeks from now, you can either choose to modify it, amend it, defer it, that'll be up to the council, but that's what the yard sale ordinance is about. Similarly, we're bringing forth in item J, a ordinance to deal with unsolicited written materials. It's really largely the newspapers that get thrown out onto lawns and driveways. Councilman Johnson brought forward some language used in Lansing, however, we've identified a ordinance coming out of Kentucky that the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals had an opportunity to give an opinion on, so we think it has a more valid basis to be legal on a going-forward basis. So that's what you have here, is that the placement of unsolicited written materials, you have to place it on the porch, you have to, or you can secure it to the front door, or put it in the mail slot, or put it between the screen and the door. You can't simply just throw it onto the lawn, throw it onto the pavement. So if you place unsolicited written materials in areas other than those allowed, it's a violation of the article. And we also made this one effective upon publication. I should have backed up and said, on the yard sale, we made it effective as of October 1st, so that it really was an approach to go into next year's yard sale season. So that's what I is about. Again, this came out of your earlier direction this year. And then the storage containers were better put, maybe, these storage pods, which are, you know, pretty rampant business around. Some ideas of how long should storage pods be able to hang out at somebody's house before they've got to be moved along? We've, we've put forward the concept that in the side or rear yard, it could be up to 21 days, but in the front yard, on that driveway in the front yard, it's a 96, so the weekend, if you will. So again, this would be, this is at the introduction stage for council to review, think about, talk to your constituents about, and come back and make suggestions. So that's what those three introductions are about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foson. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you again, Mr. Foson, for explaining what those two ordinances are, those two, specifically the yard sales and the pods, did come from citizens' feedback, and I kind of took the lead with our council during our study session to try and get that on an introduction today, and strongly support the yard sale one. I think a lot of our residents are looking for a little relief from the 24/7 enterprise some folks are running in their front yard, so I know that'll be warmly welcomed. With regards to the pods, also will support that one. I think we're a little far apart. I'd like to probably, maybe if we can, lease it with the council at one point, have a study session. I think the 21-day window is a little too aggressive for some folks who might try to do a long-term kitchen remodel. For all of us who've done a kitchen remodel, three weeks turns into three months sometimes, but definitely, probably, I would think maybe 30 days would be more realistic with a 15-day extension option. So I think we're really close on the pods. Also, I'd like to see some sort of tracking there, so they have to at least, you know, go to the city clerk online and register some that way, so at least we have a good start date and a good stop date, so we don't, we're not knocking on their doors and asking them every week if they got a permit, as our ordinance officers are going through. But I do support both of them with a little modification, of course, in the second one, and thank you to everyone.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes, I wanted to speak specifically to item F, the approval of the bid for wide-area network services to replace our existing hub, and the recommendation that 123net be the provider. Saying that, I realize that it only takes four votes for council to approve any measure here in the city, but before this moves forward, I wanted to state that I am not in support of this particular item. Being the owner of a construction company myself and participating regularly in the bidding process, this item went out to bid by the city of Westland and closed. When the bids closed, Comcast was the lowest bidder, and then the department head, who was new to his seat in the IT department, apparently based on conversation at our study session, reached out to each company that provided a bid and individually asked them to rebid. Comcast has stated that they were not given the, the terms that they were told were that they would, they were asked to submit a shorter-term bid. The city is elect, or it has been recommended that the city go with 123, who has submitted a 10-year bid and who happens to be the previous employer of Councilman Jim Hart, who resigned from that seat in November, right after he won the election. And so although there, I'm not stating that there's any improprieties relative to him being a previous employer or employee of that company, what I'm stating is, when that bid closed, it should have went back out to bid if the city was going to ask for different terms. By not sending it back out to bid, it caused what we have here today. Two representatives from Comcast are in the audience, pleading to have the opportunity to rebid according to a 10-year term, since that is the term that we accepted. I find that to be, this bidding process was handled improperly. The department head of the IT department also signed a contract that Comcast presented during the study session, which stated that based on them coming in as the lowest bidder, when this bid went out initially, that it would, they were the preferred and lowest bidder before all these conversations took place. So what I would recommend is if the city is going to close a bidding process, that you send it back out to bid if, if, and follow the, so that the city is not put in a possible situation to where we can be sued, not to say that it would happen here, but again, speaking as a business owner and a owner of a construction company, this was not handled properly. They should not be here today pleading to have the opportunity to bid against the company that is the employer of one of our former councilmen. That is totally improper. Everyone should have the same opportunity, and it should have went out to rebid. And for that reason, I am not in support of item F. Thank you.
Councilwoman Green, are you asking for this item to be removed from the consent calendar and moved to item one, in which case this discussion should have taken place as item one under the consent, under the agenda? Or are you want it left on the consent calendar?
What I'm stating is, I realize that it only takes four votes to pass, and I know how this process normally works. I'm stating in front of the residents of Westland and the Comcast representatives who are present, that I'm not in favor of this. I'm only one vote, and there are six other councilmen. So no, I'm not asking for it to be moved unless there's other councilmen who would also object to how this was handled. If not, it will go ahead and pass.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, on the newspaper delivery one, Jim, you mentioned mail slot. Some clarification, I think, needs to be put in there, because mail slot could be mailbox, and it's illegal to put them in mailboxes.
Yes, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun. Absolutely right. We do try to define it so that it's clear that if the door has a mail slot, that's what we're talking about, so that it's a secured placement, certainly not in the U.S. Post Office mailbox.
Before I recognize Councilman Hart again, is there any other discussion? Councilman Hart?
Thank you, Council President. While I, my colleague felt it appropriate to say that she didn't feel there's any impropriety, she called it out twice. So I just want to make sure everybody knows. I did work for 123net. I was a director of wireless operations. I did not serve in the fiber department. I am most, very familiar with the telecommunications industry, more so than anybody else on this bench, and I can say that, so I can offer some fair and objective criticism. My prior employment ended November 14th, as I told Councilwoman Green, as we'll tell all of you. I own no stock, no share. I have no partnering agreement with 123net. I'm not an agent. I have zero financial ties to that organization. It'd be no different than the Ford Explorer we're about to buy, where Councilman Johnson was also a prior employee of Ford. It's the same correlation. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Mr. Foson?
I wanted to clear up a contract question that was raised. The Comcast Enterprise Service Sales Order Form, which was discussed in closed session, I'm sorry, in the study session, which was signed by Craig Brown as interim chief innovation officer on July 16th, specifically has a provision in bold, and this is a Comcast document, "Board Contingency." Comcast acknowledges that customer will be seeking customer's board approval for the sales order. Customer shall have until 5:00 PM on August 30th, 2018, to request termination of this sales order without penalty or termination charges of the agreement in the event the customer's board does not approve the expenditure. Comcast will not begin performance under the agreement or this sales order until such board approval is received from customer. We did discuss in, so that's, that's the language from Comcast's agreement. We did discuss in the study session the limitation on authority for directors, or in this case, the interim chief of innovation officer, which Comcast, I'm sure, is very aware of, because it's longstanding Michigan law, as well as the inability of a unsuccessful bidder on a government project to come forward with claims. It doesn't have standing to assert that. So just wanted to get that language out to council, because you did not have an opportunity to see that language during the study session.
Thank you. I'd just like to add that what went out was a request for proposals, not a bid quote, in which case they brought back in the three that had the best proposals and negotiated with each one in good faith to come up with the best solution that would save the city, provide the city the best service, and save the city the most money. And as a result of those discussions with the three companies that were the appropriate, or that they felt were the appropriate bidders that offered the best service at the best pricing levels, 123net.net came in the lowest. We'll do a roll call on the consent calendar.
Councilwoman Green?
No.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
President Gobow?
Yes.
Motion passes. Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Request from Harbor Freight Tools to conduct a temporary sales event in the parking lot of their property located at 34600 Warren Road from August 17 through August 19, 2018, between 8:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Approval of bid for pavement marking services. Administration recommended the low bidder, RS Contracting Incorporated, on an as-needed basis. Approval of bid for rock salt. Administration recommended the low bidder, Detroit Salt Company. Price per ton for the 2018-2019 season shall not exceed $49.85. If extended, the price per ton for the 2019-2020 season shall not exceed $51.35. Approval of bid for calcium chloride dust control. Administration recommended the loan bidder, Suburban Calcium Chloride Sales Incorporated. Amount not to exceed 28 cents per gallon. Approval of bid for senior center masonry repair services. Administration recommended the low bidder, Pole Restoration and Waterproofing Company. Amount $11,696.36. Approval of bid for wide-area network services to replace our existing hub and spoke fiber wide-area network, based between City Hall and other connected city facilities. Administration recommended 123.net. Term of this agreement shall be for a 10-year period. Amount $6,755 per month. Approval of purchase of type 1 F-450 ambulance. Administration recommended the purchase from Mercy Sales. Amount $184,500. Approval of purchase of 2018 Ford Explorer. Administration recommended the purchase from North Brothers Ford. Amount $38,536. Introduction of ordinance 259A, an ordinance to amend Chapter 26, Article 8 of the Westland City Code by amending Sections 26-441 and 26-443 regarding yard sales. Introduction of ordinance 149A, an ordinance to amend Chapter 26, Article 9, to add Division 3, Unsolicited Written Materials, Sections 26-527 through 26-529 of the Westland City Code to regulate the distribution of unsolicited written materials within the city. Introduction of ordinance 192A3D, an ordinance to amend Chapter 22, Article 11, I'm sorry, Article 6 of the Westland City Code by adopting Sections 22-133 concerning portable, moving, and storage containers. Adoption of land division resolution, parcel number 061010339000, southeast corner of Schuman and Hively, south of Cherry Hill. Planning Department number 2210. This item was approved by city council on June 18, 2018. Adoption of land division and combination resolution, parcels number 033110007000 and 033010641001, west side of Farmington Road, south of Warren, planning department number 2211. This item was approved by city council on June 18, 2018. Adoption of land division and combination resolution, parcels number 079990010000 and 0011000, east side of John Hicks Road, north of Glenwood, planning department number 2214. This item was approved by city council on June 18, 2018. The last item on the consent calendar as approved, adoption of prepared resolution affirming approval of the Senior Alliance 2019 Annual Implementation Plan for Aging Services for the fiscal year of 2019 in the form approved by the Senior Alliance Plan, the Board of Directors, as presented to the city of Westland through the mayor's office. Moving to new business, item one, minutes of the regular meeting held June 16, 2018.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hammond. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
I'm staying.
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
President Gobow?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item two, nomination of delegation to the Michigan Municipal League Conference to be held September 20 through September 22, 2018, in Grand Rapids, Michigan. Like to make a nomination?
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to nominate Council President Gobow to be our delegate to the Michigan Municipal League Conference.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Motion to close by Councilman Hersberg. Is there support?
Support.
All those in favor? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item three, designation of delegate to the Michigan Municipal League Conference to be held September 20 through 22, 2018, in Grand Rapids, Michigan. President Gobow has been nominated.
Councilman Londo?
What's that? I was just saying, so move.
Oh, motion by Councilman Londo, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Hammond. Councilwoman Green? Or, I'm sorry, Councilman Hersberg. Councilwoman Green?
You want to do a roll call?
I can't.
Well, I would like to state for the record that number three, I am not in support of President Gobow being the designation of the delegate.
There'll be, we'll do a roll call on the, on the vote.
Okay, so there's no discussion allowed?
You know, there's discussion.
Okay, well, I would like to discuss. The reason, my reason for not being in agreement with this is that this seat was not opened up to every councilperson. We, several of us stated in January that many of us had asked to be on commissions even before several others. We were denied that right to sit on commissions, and these nominations and seedings are going forward without even having any, the council to say whether they would be interested in it, to look at the different areas of experience that we all individually have, and some of us are already on other commissions and hold seats, and there are several of us that have not been able to represent the city of Westland, although we are elected officials. So I am not in support of Council President Gobow being the delegate, especially after the mayor stated that it was his decision that, to deny me the opportunity to sit on a commission, so I'm not in support. Thank you.
Councilman Hart?
Thank you, Council President. Point of clarification, I believe, item two, the last item we had, I think Councilwoman Green had the opportunity to nominate anybody on the position for that nomination. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Councilwoman Green?
The point that I was making by my comment, Councilman Hart, is that it was not opened up, or no, every councilperson was not given the opportunity to even have a discussion in terms of whether we would want the seat. So I'm not in support of it for that reason, but thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Councilman Londo?
Yes, Council President, thank you. For the record, the only person I heard from was Councilman Gobow, made a phone call to me, so I just want to state that for the record. So if any other council members wish to be the delegate to the Michigan Municipal League, gets news to me, they didn't, they didn't contact me directly. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other? Councilwoman Green?
I have a, I'd like a point of clarification. When did you become the person that we should reach out to? Because I don't recall getting an email, or a phone call, or a text from you stating that if anyone is interested, please let me know. So you're stating that in our open council meeting, as if we all had that conversation, and you were sworn in the same day I was, so when did you become the point person that we should reach out to? If you could just clarify that, please?
No.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion from the council members? Any other discussion? I will just try to clarify the situation for Councilwoman Green. It's an open nomination process. Normally, when you want an appointment to a committee or a commission, you talk to other people that are going to vote on it, which I did. I called several of my colleagues to make sure that, to ask for their support. Any council member can nominate any council member for any position that's open for nominations. That didn't take place. So at this point, there's, you know, the, the issue So at this point, there is, you know, the issue was that you didn't contact anybody requesting a nomination. You didn't make a nomination for yourself to sit on this board. Therefore, it went with no dissent on the nomination process. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
No.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
No.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Godbout.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item four. Nomination of alternate delegate to the Michigan Municipal League Conference in case of the inability of the delegate to attend to be held September twenty through twenty-two, two thousand eighteen, in Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to move to nominate Councilman Mike Londo.
Motion for Councilman Londo. Councilwoman Green?
I'm not in.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations for alternate?
I would like to, sorry, go ahead. I would like to nominate myself for that seat. And I will state for the record, Council President Godbout, I asked you about this seat in January, and it is documented via email to the entire council and the mayor. I would like to nominate myself as the alternate.
Move to close nominations.
Motion to close nominations. In support, motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item five. Designation of alternate delegate to the Michigan Municipal League Conference in the event the delegate is unable to attend to be held September twenty through twenty-two, two thousand eighteen, in Grand Rapids, Michigan. Two people have been nominated. Councilman Londo and Councilwoman Green.
Is there a motion? We have to, is there a motion on the item first? Motion by Councilman Hersberg, is there support? Is there support?
Support.
All right. Councilwoman Green?
Yes, I am asking for support from the council to be voted as the alternate. I have not had the opportunity to sit on any City of Westland commission, although I was the first person to ask, and you confirmed that, Council President Godbout, in January. Councilman Londo was sworn in the same day as I was, and he is on multiple mayoral committees that the mayor has put him on. It is not fair to take the same handful of people and give them the opportunity to serve and deny others who may have a difference of opinion as it relates to some of the things that come before us, to deny them the opportunity to serve. As I stated before, Councilman Londo is already on, the mayor has already appointed him to multiple commissions. I would like the opportunity to serve. And I have over eighteen years professional business experience. I own my own property management and construction company. I am extremely qualified, if not more qualified, to serve, and I would like that opportunity. Thank you.
Councilman Londo.
Thanks, Council President. Through the chair to Councilwoman Green. What exactly commissions do I serve on? Besides this body?
Because you refuse to clarify my answer, I'm going to move forward in the process. You did not give me the courtesy that you're asking me for right now, so I will respectfully decline your request.
Just want to state for the record, she said I serve on multiple boards appointed by the mayor, and the only board I serve on is the one that five thousand some residents appointed me to, to this board on City Council.
Mr. Clerk, can we move on with the voting process, please?
Be my pleasure. So I'm going to ask. Someone.
A commissioner to come up?
Draw something out of this hat. And if not, I'll do it.
Oh, the city attorney.
Just to move this along, I think you have stuff to do tomorrow night, don't you? Tomorrow all day, starting very early.
So there are two names on a folded sheet of paper. The city attorney is not going to look, he's going to somehow get in there to select one of them. Okay. Record reflect, the other one's still in there. I'm going to open it up. The first nomination to be voted will be Councilman Londo.
Roll call, please.
Point of clarification. Once four votes are cast in favor, it's done.
Yes. Correct.
All members will vote.
Roll call.
Or pass. And four votes will carry the day. So hold on for one moment. Councilwoman Green.
No.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
No.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Godbout.
Yes.
Motion passes. Councilman Londo will be the alternate. New business. Item six. Approval of voucher.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hersberg.
I thought it was Ann.
I'm sorry, Hammond. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to citizens' comments or requests. Citizens will be recognized at the end of the meeting immediately following the agenda item, approval of vouchers. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. All citizens wishing to speak will be heard. Is there anyone on my left?
Good evening. Just two items I wanted to talk about. The weekends festival, we had a great time out there volunteering, working the statues, Ms. Wilson and myself. And we saw that, and we thought it was very well organized. Even some of the help who came in there the next morning were kind of pissed because we had cleaned the park, we had cleaned the area up so well. And so I want to thank the organizing staff for that. I think there was one particular weakness is that as it got dark, the restrooms were dark, and a lot of the seniors had problems in there. So you could probably go over to Harbor Freight and buy some of those cheap lights and put them in there. Two, the question of one of our community's staunch volunteers, Ken Sharp is in rehab. Ms. Wilson and I visited him Sunday, and he seemed to be in very good spirits and hoping to return home. So he's been on a number of committees, as you know, the planning commission, he does a lot of work in the Norwayan community, he's even in the Hall of Fame over there. So therefore, like I said, he's in rehab, he's coming along fine, hoping to go home so he can get some good food because he says there's nothing but mush over there. Okay? So that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments, move on to comments from the administration.
Thanks, Council President. Make it real brief, just wanted to do two quick things. You know, we had three new ordinances that were introduced tonight. Council's going to see a bunch more of those coming forward in the next few months to come. The council's been working out with the city attorneys, we're moving forward with those. And then we had a fantastic Blues Brews and BBQ weekend. Certainly, the next meeting or two, we're going to give all the thanks and praise to everybody that helped out. But for all those that did, we wanted to say thanks. But we're going to give some individual thanks for what a great event that turned out to be, and a huge success. And I just want to wish everybody good luck tomorrow. Thanks.
Thanks. Is there anything from the city attorney's office? We'll begin council comments. Councilwoman Green?
Yes, thank you. I would just like to thank Councilman Hammond for leading us in the pledge of allegiance today. And also would like to express my appreciation to the residents of the American House Senior Community. They are having a arts and crafts contest on this coming Thursday, August the ninth. It's going to be at two o'clock, so if anyone would like to stop in and support our seniors at the American House Senior Community on Joy Road and Hicks Road, that'll be at two o'clock, and I have been asked to participate in the judging of that contest, so I'm really looking forward to that and getting more, continuing to get involved in assisting our residents here in the City of Westland. That's it for me. Thank you.
Councilman Hammond. Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. I'll try and be brief for the benefit of the clerk. But again, a great Blues Brews BBQ this weekend. Almost every face in this room, I did see there over the event this weekend. I was on property myself from Thursday noon until Sunday noon, so I'm a little beat. Again, a great event, thank you. Deputy Mayor, please thank the entire administration staff, police and fire. They just really worked their tail off all weekend, especially all the volunteer civic groups out there like the Civitane, the Rotary. And I'll give a little extra nod to the J.C.'s. They did run their third annual All-American BBQ Throwdown. And for those of you know, we've actually got a chance to paint Westland in a positive light, like we always do. It is now, but we believe, the largest BBQ competition in the state. We had over fifty teams coming as far as north of Toronto and all the way from Pennsylvania. And every single team says, when they're on the circuit of the BBQ comp, Westland is the number one stop in all the states that they go to, and they look forward to it every year, and it's going to grow. So they have nothing but praise for our facilities, they have nothing but praise for our police and fire, and nothing but praise for the entire City of Westland. So I'd like to relay that positive information back to all of my colleagues here today. With that, it's election day tomorrow, so please, the most important thing you can do is, even though you might not agree with your neighbor, but don't let your voice go unheard. Go home, go into the booth tomorrow and make your voice heard there. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. Jimmy, for the record, I work for the UAW. We just allow Ford to pay us, and we both focus this. I'm going to be real quick, too. Many of you know that there was a slanderous post put on one of the city websites, total lie, and I'll go into it a little bit. We had a young man who was given some medication by his doctor, he had a bad reaction to it, and one site decided to post that my house had been raided. Just an absolute damn slanderous lie. We have contacted an attorney. The owner of that slander sheet has been notified in writing that we are taking legal action. We are also exploring some criminal charges. It's just time somebody tuck this guy on. Everybody up here's been attacked at one time or another, with the exception of a couple. The mayor's been attacked, council president's been attacked, Londo. The one that stands out to me the most is Councilman Reeves was accused of having a tree cut down in his backyard some years ago. There were satellite photos that showed that Councilman Reeves never had a tree in his backyard to be cut down. They just persisted, meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting, just beating Dewey's brains out. And Dewey said, "It was all right if I used his name." I said, "I wouldn't." There was never a tree in Dewey's backyard. I think we all know it, they knew it. I can only imagine that they kept attacking him for one reason, and that was the color of his skin. And it's a damn shame that it's come to that in Westland, and I'm not going to put up with it. They poked the wrong bear this time. Thank you.
Councilman Londo.
Thanks, Council President. I'll echo the comments from the administration and Councilman Hart. Blues Brews and BBQ was an amazing event, so I want to, well, like you said, we'll thank everybody later, but I have to thank, obviously, our volunteers, I have many of them in the room. Thank you very much. You guys worked hard and long hours, and it was hot out there, and we appreciate all you guys that were out there helping us out. And obviously, thanks to the police and fire department and our DPS and our park rangers as well. I hope the residents enjoyed a wonderful event, we look forward to seeing you next year. If you didn't get enough free music this weekend, make sure to head out for another free outdoor concert this Saturday featuring urban country music artist and songwriter Paulina Jane. She's originally from Michigan, she's a recording artist in Nashville. She'll be here this Saturday, August eleventh, at the Westland Shopping Center, outdoor concert. Activities begin at two PM with the concert at four PM. There's going to be raffles, food, and much more, and the proceeds from the money that they do raise are going to be benefiting Last Day Dog Rescue. Our coffee hour or resident outreach will be this Saturday, August eleventh as well, at twelve o'clock at Carrato Park in Westland, at the Park Pavilion. So we invite you to stop by and meet personally with a few of us, where we can hear your concerns, answer questions, or just have a chat, and hear about how we can improve Westland. I also want to congratulate the Westland Police Officers for the, Westland Police Department, excuse me, for another successful Westland Police Department Youth Academy that just wrapped up last week. That's an incredible opportunity for our young people to really get educated on what our police officers do, and also hopefully we can recruit them to our Police Explorer Program or our Police Service Aides. So thank you again to them. The Infinity Homes fence issue that most of you may have saw on the news, I attended a community meeting with members of the administration, Levonia Public Schools, and the developers. And I've been in contact with many of the residents, helping to answer any questions that I can answer, and I look forward to a resolution that we can all, can be agreed upon from the developer and the affected residents. Senior Day is this Thursday at the Westland Farmers and Artisan Marketplace from three to seven PM, so come on by to shop your marketplace favorites, and they'll be adding some special vendors of interest to our senior citizens. And you can also learn about some of the local services and activities designed just for you. Last couple things, I won't be at the next council meeting, I'll be out of state for a few days, but as always, if any residents have any questions or issues, they can reach out to me directly via phone, email, or my Facebook page, Councilman Mike Londo. And other than that, good luck to the candidates running in the primary election, and thank you to the election workers that are working tomorrow. Thanks.
Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just repeat, we're having that coffee hour again with three of us council members. We're going to be at Carrato Park, which is on Flamingo Street, north of Ann Arbor Trail. And I think we're going to be getting up a flyer on our Facebook pages, so if anybody forgets the date or time or the location, we're going to get that up there for you. Regarding the ordinance proposed changes, I'm glad we're finally moving forward on this. We've talked about the newspapers and the delivery of those. I mean, I've heard about them, I've been knocking doors since 2011, and people have been complaining about that. There's the Free Press and different newspapers, they just get thrown in the street, they get thrown on people's lawns, they, in the wintertime, it's a real problem. So it looks like we're going to finally wrap that up, as well as many other ordinances. So I know Councilman Hart asked for a study session, and I'd like to sit down with the council, too, and discuss exactly the changes that are taking place. Regarding the vote for the alternate, had, Councilwoman Green, had you asked me, I would have considered voting for you, but I had already told Councilman Londo that I would support him. And it's not a board or commission, it's the alternate to the MML Conference where they're going to be voting on policy and a lot of, a lot of serious things that have been going on for a long time. I think Godbout would be the most knowledgeable person that we could send there to be casting a vote. So good luck. City Clerk Richard LeBlanc, tomorrow on Election Day. That's it.
First, I'd like to thank Adam for leading us in the pledge this evening. And I'd also like to thank my colleagues for the nomination and support to be the delegate for the MML Convention. The, has been mentioned, the Blues Brews BBQ this weekend was a great event. The weather was great. We had fantastic crowds both nights of the event. I want to, you know, and I'm afraid to leave somebody out, and there'll be a follow-up email to all the volunteers, thanking them individually for signing up and working the event, as well as for providing suggestions on what we can do to make it better next year. But we had more volunteers this year, and it worked out tremendously. It was a great event. There were, the DPS Department, you know, those guys worked very hard. I went over there Sunday morning afterwards, drove up and down Carlson, drove up and down Ford Road. You never would have known that there was an event the night before. They were doing the finished teardown, but there was no trash around. Everything was getting picked up and put away. It was a great effort on behalf of the DPS. We've got court workers that were out there, I'm sure, doing a lot of the cleanup. Thanks to the DDA for putting on the fireworks, which is a huge draw on Saturday. To the administration and the administration staff, who were all there chipping in, helping out, PD and Fire, you know, you guys were there the entire duration of the event. And to Brooke Ellen Swope, who coordinated all the activities from the chamber, did a phenomenal job of coordinating it. You know, it was a great weekend here in Westland. We not only had Blues Brews and BBQ, but Buffalo Wild Wings had a big event as well with a live band on their premises and, for charity. And there were little, if any, incidents at either event. So hats off to the residents, hats off to everyone that showed up, everybody was polite, respectful, and had a great time, so that's all I have. Is there a motion to adjourn?